Hey, good morning. It's 10 o'clock to order. I'm Jason Dean, Chairman of the Mississippi Board of Education, currently present in Madison, Mississippi. I will ask everyone, again, to please mute your phone if you're not speaking. Please mute. There's some, you know, reduce the background noise. I'll also remind everyone that the Board is currently being livestreamed on YouTube. Obviously, we are meeting remotely, and we'll go through the role here in a second, but our conversation is being broadcast livestream on YouTube. The meeting of the Board of Education is being held today, Thursday, March 26, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. via teleconference pursuant to Mississippi Code Annotated Section 2541-5. Notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with state law and included the date, time, place, and purpose of the meeting and identified the location of the meeting available to the public. An audio recording is being made of the meeting in Annotated Section 2541-5. Notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with state law and included the date, time, place, and purpose of the meeting and identified the location of the meeting available to the public. An audio recording is being made of the meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be recorded. Dr. Carrie Wright is present in Madison, Mississippi as well, I believe, to participate in this teleconference meeting. As I go through quorum, there's no need to say your specific street address. If you could just say city and state where you're located, that's enough, good enough for the record. Ms. Rosemary Altman.
I'm present in Clinton, Mississippi.
Mr. Buddy Bailey.
I'm present in Brandon, Mississippi.
Ms. Nancy Collins.
Present, Cleveland, Mississippi.
Dr. Karen Elam. Dr. John Kelly.
Present, Gulfport, Mississippi.
Ms. Brittany Wright.
Present, Starkville, Mississippi.
Mr. Sean Thugs.
Present, Saltillo, Mississippi.
Mr. Omar Jamil.
Present, South Haven, Mississippi.
Ms. Shelby Dean.
Present, Clinton, Mississippi.
A quorum of the Board is present at the location stated for the purpose of conducting the meeting through teleconference meetings. The March 26, 2020 special call Board meeting is now called to order at 10:00 a.m. Since this is a teleconference meeting, please identify yourself when asking questions, making comments, or making motions. Next on our list is remarks from the Chair. And we're in a little different order this time because of the special call meeting. I'll make my comments very briefly before I get into some of the work we've been... I'll make my comments very briefly before I get into some of the work we've been participating in last week. I just want to take this moment just to recognize the effort that has been underway by Dr. Wright and her executive leadership team, as well as, you know, the folks there at the Department of Education working remotely currently, but also the real leadership and effort to stand up a whole new process of education that no one's ever done before. They've been working tirelessly, day and night, weekends, and just, you know, to, I just want to take this opportunity to acknowledge that effort. It's not going unnoticed. So, the one thing I would say is that our last Board meeting on Thursday, I mentioned the creation of a task force or working group for the purposes of being responsive to Governor Reeves. So, you know, having spent some time in the past working on broadband policy in the state of Mississippi, I think it's pretty, you know, obvious to most folks. You know, we have a disparity when it comes to the availability of broadband, particularly in our rural districts, as well as some issues related to the availability of devices. There's some policy that I think needs to be addressed, particularly federal policy around E-Rate, and then some financing questions in how we pay for dual enrollment in our Mississippi Virtual Public School online classes. So, I convened an informal call yesterday and started writing down ideas and thoughts from professionals. We had about 30 folks on the phone. They were arranged from people who, with the rural co-ops to vendors for large multinational corporations like Apple and Microsoft. And the purpose of this would be to ideally present a roadmap to the Governor by the summer as it relates to the technical aspect of going online in the future. We know that the people working there in the department on the instructional curriculum aspect of it, that's well underway. That's not the intent of what I'm doing, so we're not, you know, stepping on each other's toes here. But I think together, what we know about instruction and what we know about the technical aspect of, you know, going, you know, online at the flip of a switch, I think is a really exciting opportunity. As I've said before, disruption leads to innovation. And, you know, not that Mississippi gets a lot of snow, but I could see how this would be, you know, in the future. There's no such thing as a snow day anymore. What's the point? When you can just keep on going, you know, so what's the point? When you can just keep on going, you know, so no time's lost, and it's better for kids and their education. So with that, Dr. Wright, I'll turn it over to you. Any remarks from you?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Dean, and thank you for your kind words. I too want to recognize the work of the team here at MDE because there has been, they've been working nonstop and the people that are trying to put together resources for districts, et cetera. So, not only to my leadership team, but to every staff member that's working so hard from home to make sure our districts have what they need. I also really wanted to say hats off to our superintendents, our principals, our teachers, support staff. I'm hearing all kinds of stories from around the state about how everybody is stepping up to make sure the children have learning that is taking, have learning that is taking place in a very appropriate and very different manner. But everybody has been committed to ensuring that this is not time loss for children. And so, I really want to say to all superintendents, principals, teachers, support staff, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for ensuring our children are getting fed. Thank you for the fact that you're trying to set up virtual programs and/or packets for them for learning. This is a tough time for everybody, and I just want to say thank you for that. The team, what we're bringing to you today, Board members, we met as a leadership team to take a look at all of the policy statutes, you know, processes that we have in place that impact districts related to the areas that we're going to be talking about today. And so, we are recommendations to you. Please don't hesitate to ask any questions. I do want you to know that I did review this with my superintendents advisory committee yesterday, and they were very appreciative with its thoroughness. I also assured them that should we get down the road another week or so and somebody realized we've overlooked something, that you, as a Board, have promised and been so proactive to say if you needed to get back into a special call meeting, don't hesitate to let us know. And I think that's very reassuring for them as well to know how responsive that you've been through this whole process. So with that, Dr. Dean, I'm going to turn it back over to you, and Dr. Vanderford will be the one that will be doing the presentation of all the items. And so, thank you.
Okay. Well, one other order of business, and we'll get into our discussion and approval of the Board items. We need an approval of the agenda, and because it's a special call meeting, we're not entertaining an agenda, and because it's a special call meeting, we're not entertaining amendments or deletions. But we do still have to approve the agenda, so may I please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Karen Elam, so moved.
John Kelly, second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Here none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. With that, we'll move into the heart of the agenda here for the approval, I mean, excuse me, for the discussion and approval of Board items. And all actions, items require a vote. And Dr. Vanderford, before I turn this over to you, I just would remind everybody, in the Governor's proclamation of a state of emergency in his governor powers, he empowered the State Board of Education to approve the waiver of certain statutes, rules, regulations, orders. What, which one of those, which, you know, any of those that I mentioned, we'll be voting on to waive? And so, you know, it's super consequential, obviously. But also, I would just underscore what Dr. Wright said in that, you know, I think we've got probably the majority of it here. But if we need to come back together in another emergency call meeting, we certainly can do that in the future. That's more for the folks that are listening in. If there's things that you think that we might need to be considering, I think there's proper avenues to express that. So with that, Dr. Vanderford, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. Before I walk through each of the Board items, I would just like to give some general information that will apply to all of the Board items, and therefore, we will not have to be repetitive. First, I would like to apologize to the Board members that the material that you received on Tuesday evening was not in its final format. Board items have been posted to Board Book and, of course, are live for the public on our website today. And so, there's been no changes to the content, but just some minor grammatical corrections for the final format. Secondly, although the APA process is not necessary because in the executive order, the Governor, as Dr. Dean mentioned, granted the State Board of Education the authority to suspend rules, but we've been working very closely with Attorney Meyer, who's been working with the AGs at the Secretary of State office and working closely with the program offices as we work to pull together what we feel like are the most immediate rule suspensions that are needed. And we've tried to format it in, as a simple format, in order to present to the Secretary of State. So, to simplify, or the most immediate rule suspensions that are needed, and we've tried to format it in, as a simple format, in order to present to the Secretary of State. So, to simplify, the rule suspensions outlined in each of the Board items, they're categorized by the part numbers associated with the Secretary of State filings. So, for example, with the Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards, which is Item 1, there's multiple program offices across the agency that contribute to this, but our rule suspensions apply to this one document, and so this will simplify our filings with the Secretary of State. I'll briefly provide an overview of each rule suspension, and then I will pause for Board members to answer questions. And, of course, some of the items in Item 1 are particularly related to some program offices that are supervised by the Board. Item contains the statutory authority for this recommendation of the rule suspensions that the staff is making to the MDE, as well as previous Board actions. So, I will not be walking through each of the Board items. We have tried to be as generous as possible with both students and educators in our rule suspensions while considering the impact that such suspensions would have on instructional practices in the school district. Each Board item will also outline the specific policy suspensions, but it's the same ones that are contained in the chart. So therefore, we'll just walk through the chart as backup material in that format. So if there's no questions, we'll start with Board Item 1, which is associated with Part 24, and it will outline the specific policies with, for the non-public schools that are credited by MDE. And again, all of this is in accordance with Governor Reeves' proclamation of state of emergency as a result of the impact. So, the backup material that you have for Item 1 begins on Page 3 with the chart. And the first is related to the statewide accountability system. Some of this information you're very aware of because on March 19, during your regular meeting, you granted approval for districts and schools to maintain the same accountability designation for the 2021 school year as they were assigned in the 2019, 2020 school year. And as a reminder, there'll have, there'll be no cumulative impact for cases where multiple years with the same designation may lead to a more severe consequence. For example, when considering the eligibility of districts for ASD. If you've noticed, I've sent an email to the Board, but just for the purpose of the knowledge of the general public, on March 20, the MDE submitted an expedited waiver to the United States Department of Education to waive requirements, or certain requirements in Section 1111 of ESBA related to the decisions that were made by the Board for assessment and accountability requirements. And based on Ed's review of our request, it appears to meet all statutory requirements. And accordingly, Ed intends to issue a formal approval of our waiver request in the coming weeks. But in the meantime, we have the authority, we've been granted the authority to implement the waivers while Ed is in the process of formal approval. Now, what is new to this section of the documents that we did not discuss in the March 19 formal approval? Now, what is new to this section of the documents that we did not discuss in the March 19 meeting is the school improvement designation. So, schools and districts will retain the same designation for comprehensive support and improvement schools, for targeted support and improvement schools, and for additional targeted support and improvement schools. And so, this three-year average, or the three-year average that's performance that's used in identification will exclude the 1920 school year as well. I will say, along with this item, as you can imagine, that we're getting a lot of questions regarding the future implications on the accountability system that this one-year suspension will have. We have been working very closely, particularly Allen Bureau, with Dr. Domoleski, who chairs the Accountability Task Force, and our technically for us to start outlining each implication that these decisions that we're making now will have. So, we're going to begin working in the near future. Actually, the Accountability Task Force met on Tuesday and began talking about some of the future implications. And they have a meeting scheduled in April, and they will immediately begin to work on looking at the model and all of the business rules associated with the model and the impact that this suspension has had. But I just wanted to inform the Board that that will go through the process as we look towards the 2021 calculations. It'll go through the process of the Accountability Task Force through our, the Commission, the Board, the PAC, as we always do with changes to the system. Is there any questions related to the, questions related to the accountability system? If not, we'll move into Process Standard 2. Just a little background here. Each year, districts are required to submit personnel data via NSIS to the MDE, and the personnel snapshot is taken at the end of December, and accreditation staff begins working what we refer to as the personnel edit. And if there's any districts out of compliance with licensed staff or student-teacher ratios, or whatever it may be, we, at this time of the year, begin notifying districts of any errors or any potential issues of noncompliance. And then districts are required to respond to clear those citations. So, requiring districts to respond to these notifications of noncompliance to licensed staff, notifications of noncompliance to licensed staff during these school closures, we believe poses an undue burden on districts. So therefore, we're asking the MDE to issue a one-year, or the Board to approve for the MDE to issue a one-year suspension, requiring districts to respond to the personnel edit for the 2019, 2020 school year. Any questions? Process Standard 3 is related to our professional growth system. So, again, MDE will suspend the requirement, suspend the requirement for districts to submit their annual employee performance data for the 1920 school year via SharePoint. However, if districts choose to submit the data, it will, they will have an opportunity to do so. But what this suspension will do will remove any sanction for any district, that's districts to attend the MDE-approved PGS training for the 2019 school year, because, as you know, many of those trainings had to be canceled due to our state of an emergency. Questions related to professional growth system? Process Standard 4 requires school districts to obtain an annual financial audit of the school district no later than nine months after the end of the district's fiscal year, which is March 31. And you'll see that the Office of Management and Budget has authorized recipients and sub-receipients that have fiscal year ends June 30, 2020, to delay the completion and submission of their single audit reporting package by six months. And so therefore, the MDE is requesting approval from the Board to temporarily suspend the deadline that OMB is extending. If there's no questions, Process Standard 10 is related to the implementation of procedures for monitoring and reporting student absences as specified in the Mississippi Compulsory Attendance Law. Districts will not be required to monitor and submit student referrals for attendance violations of compulsory school-age students after March 16, which was the first day of school closures, through the date that the classes resume. So, you, I'm sure you noticed that several of the items have through the date that classes resume. So since we, I mean, we're certainly hoping that districts will resume classes on April 20 as planned, but we left that open-ended in the event that that has to be extended. The note there indicates that actions taken for petitions filed and that open-ended in the event that that has to be extended. The note there indicates that actions taken for petitions filed and scheduled court dates fall under the jurisdiction of the court, and so the MDE will continue to adhere to the court's rules. This is the program office that reports to Dr. Oakley, so at this time, I'll just ask Dr. Oakley if there's anything he would like to add regarding Process Standard 10.
Thank you, Paula.
All right, if there's no questions, we'll move to Page 6 and look at Process Standard 13. Process Standard 13 and the requirement to have 180 teaching days. This is an item that we discussed at the March 19 regularly scheduled meeting, and the SBE suspended the requirement that mandated each school district to submit a request to alter their school calendar and request for any of the days missed that are directly related to the COVID-19 state of an emergency. At that time, you also approved for districts to alter their school terms to operate for less than 180 days for the 1920 school year. Standard 13.1 deals with the requirement of a teaching day to provide a minimum of 330 minutes of instruction. So, the MDE is asking for approval to suspend the requirement for the 330 minutes of instruction per day beginning March 16 and ending the day that classes resume. So, once school is back in session, schools will be, that day will be required to adhere to the 330 minutes of instruction per day. With Process Standard 13.2, this ensures that required to adhere to the 330 minutes of instruction per day. With Process Standard 13.2, this ensures that districts offer a minimum of 140 hours of instruction for each Carnegie unit that's offered, and 70 hours for each half-unit of instruction provided. So what, this is an item that we would normally, we're asking the MDE to suspend this requirement of the 140 hours of instruction being offered for one Carnegie unit and 70 hours for the half-Carnegie unit. It's going to be the local district's authority to determine the process for awarding a Carnegie unit for courses that are incomplete for the 1920 school year. And we've noted that Carnegie units shall not be granted for courses where district's authority to determine the process for awarding a Carnegie unit for courses that are incomplete for the 1920 school year. And we've noted that Carnegie units shall not be granted for courses where a student was never enrolled in the 1920, 19, 2019, 2020 school year. Districts, there's also a caveat that districts may not enroll a student in a Carnegie unit-bearing course after March 16, which is the first day of the state of an emergency for school closures, for the sole purpose of awarding a Carnegie unit credit unless one of the following conditions are met. The first, that the district's on a four-by-four block schedule, and the student is taking a half-credit course the last nine weeks of school. And two, the student is enrolling in an approved online course through the Mississippi Online Course Approval Process. The conditions outlined above are not applicable to transfer students that are enrolling in a school district on or after March 16. Though we have had some questions from school districts about transfer students that are trying to enroll, and of course, they are enrolling those students, and therefore, if they're a high school student, would have to enroll them in a Carnegie unit-bearing course that they were taking in their previous school for the remainder of the school year. So based on approved Board policy, local districts have the authority to issue a standard high school diploma to any student who meets the minimum graduation requirement as approved by the State Board of Education. So any questions regarding instructional time requirements?
Paula Buddy Bailey here. Are you going to cover dual credit later? Or is this an appropriate time to ask that question about dual credit or any waivers associated with that?
So the community colleges have shifted, yes, the community colleges have shifted at this point their instruction to a virtual setting through the end of the spring semester, and have been communicating, as I understand, with the individual districts in their community college region so that students should be able to continue with that content this spring. We've also encouraged districts, as they get thought to device assignment, that they prioritize those students that may be currently in a online dual-credit course to get those courses completed.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Vanderford, this is Ms. Wright, and I did have just a clarification to make sure I'm understanding this. Is this okay, time to ask?
Yes.
Okay, so if the district is on a four-by-four block schedule, and they have students that would be enrolling into a class that was required, how does that requirement is met? Is that what that's stating?
Yes, I mean, the districts are allowed to enroll those students in that required course. But we, that's, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
But that's why we left that in there as a condition because we knew that that spring break mark is generally when the third nine weeks ends and the fourth nine weeks begin, which is a four-by-four, and that's those half-Carnegie unit credits. So we did not want to penalize a student to where they would not be able to enroll in a course if that course was required and they needed to earn that half-Carnegie unit this year. But yes, it is a local district decision on how they're delivering that instruction and ensuring that the student meets the content of the course. On how they're delivering that instruction and ensuring that the student meets the content of the course.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So as you can imagine, the next section related to graduation requirements, and we have had countless number of questions related to particularly the end-of-course assessment since we suspended all statewide assessments this year, and naturally, the districts, as well as parents, are concerned at the impact that this will have on students. Looking at Standard 14.1, this is related to the minimum number of Carnegie units that a student must earn in order to graduate. So the State Board sets the minimum. Carnegie units required to earn a standard or traditional high school diploma, and those are outlined in Appendix A. But many districts have requirements beyond circumstances. If we went into a district and the state auditor's office was auditing, or if the MDE were auditing, and a district changed their graduation requirement mid-year without advance notice students, that would result in a citation to the district. And it would also be misaligned with the student handbook that was provided to the student for the school year. So what we're doing here is due to the... So what we're doing here is due to the impact these school closures are having, the MDE is asking the board to approve the suspension of citations associated with the changing of local school board graduation requirements mid-year. So each local school board has the authority, if this is approved, to suspend or amend their graduation requirements that they currently have in their local board policy for the 1920 school year. However, in no circumstance shall a student be allowed to graduate with less than the minimum number of Carnegie units that are set forth in Appendix A and approved by the State Board of Education. So this is local board authority, but if local board, the local boards exercise that authority, then they would not receive a citation from MDE for doing so mid-year, because this is not a best practice, of course. All right, moving into process standard 14.
Hey, hey, I'm sorry, Dr. Vanfor, that's such a critical part of this, I want to make sure, are there any questions from any of the board members?
Yes, Buddy Bailey. Paula, if somebody wants to, if a student transfers back in and wants to re-enroll under these new, under these new, these new assignments, my assumption is, and I think we got direction yesterday, they would be allowed to do that, and have we thought through that process?
So you're talking about a student that has already dropped out and that could just re-enroll in order to take advantage of these exemptions?
Correct. There's something maybe to think through. That may not be a topic of discussion for today, but something to think through.
Okay, all right. Well, I think we need to discuss that among the leadership team, because as we go through the process standard 14 and the requirement, we distinguish between students that are currently enrolled as of March 16th and those that are not enrolled, so that may actually answer your question in the next section. So process in the next section. So process standard 14 is related to the end-of-course assessment requirements, or a student meeting one of the options in lieu of passing the test as outlined in Appendix A. So to the best of our ability, we have tried to address the questions that we have received via social media, text messages, emails, phone calls, so on and so forth, related to the suspension of the statewide assessments. So number one is that any student, grade seven through 12, that is enrolled in Algebra I, Biology, English II, or US History during the 1920 school year and earns the Carnegie unit credit, will not be required to take and pass the corresponding end-of-course subject area test or meet one of the options in lieu of passing to meet the graduation requirement. So this deals with students that are currently enrolled, grade seven through 12, that earn the Carnegie unit. An example that we discussed with Superintendent's Advisory Council yesterday is you have a ninth-grade student that is enrolled in Biology this year, then that student has taken the course during the 1920 school year, earned the credit for the course, did not have the option of taking the statewide assessment because it was suspended, that student will graduate with only three of four of the end-of-course assessments. They would have to have Algebra I, they would have to have English II, and they would have to have US History in order to graduate. But they, if they're enrolled in Biology, earn the Carnegie unit credit this year, that exempts that student from ever, seven through 12, who are enrolled during the school year 2019, 2020, as of March the 16th, which was the first day of the state of emergency, that has passed Algebra I, Biology, English II, or US History, but has not passed the course, has not passed the associated subject area test, I'm sorry, or met one of the options in lieu of passing the test, will be allowed to graduate if all other state and local requirements have been met. So I think this one addresses your question, Mr. Bailey, because they have to be enrolled as of March the 16th if they're missing one of the assessments. If they've passed the course but are missing one of the assessments, if they were not enrolled as of March the 16th, then this number two would not be applicable to that student.
Good, thank you.
Enrolled as of March the 16th, then this number two would not be applicable to that student.
Good, thank you.
All right, number three, any student in grade seven through 12 who took a fall 2019 end-of-course assessment as a first-time test taker in a four-by-four district and failed the end-of-course assessment, that student will not be required to retake the corresponding assessment or meet one of the options in lieu of passing the test in any future school year to meet the graduation requirement. So we had a lot of questions about students that had already tested in the fall and whether or not an exemption would apply to them, but, so the students that are enrolled in districts on a four-by-four in grade seven through 12 as a first-time test taker have the same benefit.
Hey, Paula, I mean, Dr. Vanfor, can we just push pause for a minute, to pause for one minute? I don't know if we have, yeah, we definitely want to make sure, you know, those that are watching on YouTube have an opportunity. I don't know, is there anybody that's, are working on this, on the line, that can confirm?
John, are your people in the building?
Yep, we're checking on it.
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting text messages, that's the live stream has been cut off. One's lost connection.
It's 10:37, so let's just push a pause until 10:40, and just let's see if we can resolve these issues. This is way too critical not to have this live stream, so let's just take three minutes and see if we can resolve it, okay?
Paula, as an FYI.
So let's just take three minutes and see if we can resolve it, okay?
Go ahead then, Dr. Dean.
Yep, Dr. Vanfor, go ahead.
Okay, I believe we were beginning with number four on page nine of the backup material. That's related to any student that's enrolled in Algebra I, Biology I, or English II, US History in the 1920 school year who fails the course during the 1920 school year and must repeat the course in the 2021 school year or a school year thereafter in order to earn the Carnegie unit, will be required to pass the corresponding end-of-course subject area test or meet one of the options in lieu of. So if a student failed the course that they're enrolled in during this school year, and they must retake the course in order to earn the Carnegie unit, they will have that exemption. With number five, any student currently enrolled in school in the 1920 school year who earned the Carnegie unit in one of those four courses in a school year prior to 2019, 2020, but took the test as a first-time test taker in the fall of 2019, or was planning to take the assessment as a first-time test taker in the spring of 2020, will not be required to take and pass the end-of-course assessment or meet one of the options in lieu of. So again, we're talking about students that have already earned the Carnegie unit credit where the, whether they earned it in the 1920 school year or prior to the 1920 school year. With number six, as you know, we have options, as we've mentioned, in lieu of passing the assessment that is outlined in Appendix A5. Some of those options are available to students that are still currently enrolled in school, while other options are available to students that are no longer enrolled in school. The composite score option, as referenced in number six, is one of those options that's available only to students that are enrolled in school, and this is just a statement that says the composite score option outlined in Appendix A5 will not be available to students who do not have four end-of-course subject area tests. So the example that we used in number one, the freshman that's enrolled in Biology this year is exempt from the end-of-course assessment as long as he or she earns the Carnegie unit credit during the 1920 school year, but that student will not have, when it's time to graduate, four end-of-course assessments, so therefore, that student will not have the option of utilizing, or end-of-course assessment, so therefore, that student will not have the option of utilizing the composite score as outlined in A5.
Paula, Buddy Bailey here. A question on retesting. If a student took the test first semester and failed it, and needs to retest, is that waived also?
You're talking about a student that's already earned the Carnegie unit credit?
Yes, he would have earned the Carnegie unit credit, but failed the test.
That's correct. That one is going to fall under number five, a student who's still enrolled in school, they earned their Carnegie unit credit prior to the 1920, 2019, 2020, I don't know why I can't say that today, I apologize, but they took the test in the fall as a first-time test taker. Are there seven? Number seven deals with those students who are not currently enrolled in school, but they're still trying to meet the graduation requirement through either a retest opportunity for the end-of-course assessment, or one of the other options that's outlined in Appendix A5. But this is a statement that just states that these students will still be required to pass the end-of-course subject area test or meet one of the options in lieu of. So for a student that is no longer enrolled in school, must follow the options that are outlined for students that are not currently enrolled. So I think number seven, and then number, let me, number two, Mr. Bailey, addresses the questions that you had related to the enrollment, the re-enrollment of students.
Right.
The enrollment of students.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so graduation requirements, of course, as we stated at the beginning, has been a big one, so I just want to pause here to ensure that everyone's clear on the scenarios that we have outlined, and as Dr. Wright mentioned, and Dr. Dean has stated, that we may not have covered every scenario, but we have tried to address all the questions that we've received, as well as give thought to any questions that we may not have received. But if there's any other scenario or circumstance, we will come back to the board at a later date. Okay, if there's.
Dr. Dean?
Yes, sir.
This is John Kelly. This is for Dr. Wright. The issue are so critical, as are all of the rules, but I can just foresee there being a lot of questions in the minds of principals and superintendent, particularly about that particular rule. And to avoid any appeals and any of that kind of stuff that I'll try to head off, appeals and such that might have to come before the board, I'm just wondering, how are we going to further educate or inform superintendents and principals and get clarity to them on these various rules to try to mitigate, if you will, appeals and such?
That's a good question. One thing that we could offer to do after the board approves these would be to hold a couple of webinars for principals around this, after the board approves these, would be to hold a couple of webinars for principals around the state. The Superintendent's Advisory went through these line by line yesterday, and I think there was only one question that was in their mind, but we could certainly open this up and have additional webinars. That's not a problem at all. That's easy for us to do. It's a good idea.
I think that would be very appropriate. Thank you so much.
Not a problem. All right, Dr. Dean, would you like me to proceed with process standard 16?
Yes, please.
Okay, process standard 16 is related to the requirements of the statewide assessment system. This is just included because we did want to have a comprehensive list and not have districts have to look in, you granted approval to suspend all federal and state requirements, and those assessments that we discussed on March 19th are listed in the chart, and then also, as I stated, under the section for the accountability system, that we have submitted our waiver to Ed, and we have been granted preliminary approval, and we are awaiting final approval. So process standard 20.2 is related to the instructional management system, which requires a tiered instructional model, including academic intervention, behavior interventions, and implementation of the Literacy-Based Promotion Act. So in your March 19th meeting, you did grant approval to suspend all statewide assessments for the 2019, 2020 school year, which includes the third-grade reading theory, and the 2019, 2020 school year shall be promoted to fourth grade for the 2021 school year if the student meets all other district requirements for promotion. So we want to reiterate, they're exempt from passing the third-grade assessment, but they're not exempt from any promotion requirements that the local district has. We have a small number of students in third grade each year when we issue our final report in accordance with the Literacy-Based Promotion Act that were retained due to local school board requirements, so this suspension or exemption would not require, apply to those students. The dyslexia screener, that's to be administered to all students during the spring of their kindergarten school year, will be suspended for the 1920 school year.
Uh, Dr. Dean?
Be administered to all students during the spring of their kindergarten school year, will be suspended for the 1920 school year.
Uh, Dr. Dean, I think we're back online now, so just to reiterate, anything that has been missed, the full recording at the end of this meeting obviously will be posted, but we, I do believe we are at least now back online.
Right, thank you for that. And just as a matter of procedure, I think the documents are available online, and what Dr. Vanfor is doing is just walking through in detail, each of these, they're available again online, and when she gets done, we'll vote to approve what she's going over in detail. So no action's been taken by the board yet, she's just describing what each of these, what the impact is for each of these. Dr. Vanfor, go ahead.
All right, with process standardization, progression, and retention of students, so this item is similar to the one that we discussed under process standard 14.1, where a district would receive a citation if they suspended or changed their local school board policies mid-year, but due to the impact that school closures that has had on districts, the MDE will suspend, upon board approval, citations associated with changing local school board policies mid-year related to the promotion, progression, retention, and retention of students, as well as the district's grading policy. Again, with this item, the local school board has the authority to amend local school board policies related to promotion, progression, retention, which falls under process standard 21, and their uniform grading policy, which falls under process standard 21.1, but shall be applied equitably to all students. So a district would still be subject to a citation of this process standard if there was a case where the board did not implement the new policy that was approved equitably across all students, or equitably to all students.
Dr. Vanfor, Buddy Bailey here, a topic of discussion certainly is grading out there, and what would happen if we didn't return to school and we were just completing third-nine week grades and they... return to school and third, we were just completing third nine weeks grades and they're finalized? What happens with grading if we didn't return to school and students were failing at third nine weeks and that grade was locked in? My understanding is that this Process Standard 21 would give the local school board the opportunity to go in and adjust that grading policy to, Process Standard 21 would give the local school board the opportunity to go in and adjust that grading policy to accommodate those students. Can you speak to that just a little bit?
Well, I will state that Process Standard 21, the grading policy and these promotion, retention policies are a local district decision, and the local board has the authority to make that decision. So, the MDE is not making recommendations to districts. This was a topic that Dr. Wright may like to add in that was discussed at Superintendent's Advisory Council yesterday, but again, you know, local districts have the authority to establish these policies, and we do expect some variation among districts. Dr. Wright, do you have anything?
Uh, Dr. Van Defer, I think you said what I was asking for is that MDE will not put out...
Um, Process Standard 28 is related to student teacher ratios. If you recall, I think it was a February board item where we presented the waiver request for student teacher ratios for grades one through four, but we also have requirements, as you see outlined under Process Standard 28 and Process Standard 28.1 through 28.5, and I will not read each of those since they're stated there, where waivers can be requested in some instances to, the waiver request goes before the Commission on School Accreditation, and then in others with grades one through four directly to the state board. But again, we think that requiring districts to respond to notifications of noncompliance related to student teacher ratios during the time of school closures does pose an undue burden on districts, and so we're asking, and so we're asking the board to issue a one-year suspension, requiring districts to request those waivers, either to the State Board of Education or to the Commission on Accreditation in order to comply with all of the standards that fall under Process 28 related to student teacher ratios. But again, I will say that the state board has already approved those that had been submitted as of the February 2020 board meeting. And then lastly, we have Process Standard 32 and 32.1, which is related to the state statute that governs the education of juveniles in youth detention centers. This is a standard, of course, that is directly monitored from Dr. Oakley's office, as he may want to add additional information, directly monitored from Dr. Oakley's office, as he may want to add additional information, but due to the impact on the closures of the school district that will suspend citations associated with the education of juveniles in the detention centers, and we expect that the educational centers provide the same instruction or the same services to the peers, that their peers are receiving in the sponsoring school district, whether that be online content or just instructional packets. So, the monitoring for this process standard is only suspended from March 16, 2020, which is the first date of the school closures through the date that classes resume following the state of an emergency. Uh, Dr. Oakley, do you have anything to add to Process Standard 32?
I think that was clear. Do you have to take any questions?
That we have, that we're requesting suspension of rules that fall under any federal statute, any state law, or any process standard, or state board policy that's outlined in Part 24 Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards and the associated process standards for the Mississippi non-public schools that are accredited by MDE. And of course, the assessment and accountability standards do not apply to non-public schools that we accredit, but all other standards would be applicable.
Okay, before we go into the motion, are there any general discussion or questions? Then I'll state the motion and ask for someone to move with a second, and then we'll entertain any questions specific to the motion. So, the motion is approval, the motion, so the motion is approval by the State Board of Education to suspend specific policies and process standards in Mississippi Administrative Code 7-24 Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards 2019 and Mississippi Administrative Code 7-163 Mississippi Nonpublic School Accountability Standards 2019 for the 2019, 2020 school year following Governor Tate Reeves' proclamation of a state of emergency as a result of the impact of COVID-19 coronavirus on school districts during the spring of 2020 in accordance with Mississippi Code Sections 3315-31, 3315-11B and 9, and 3315-11C1. So, that's the motion. If someone can move, then we'll get a second and ask for any questions.
Mr. Chairman, John Kelly here. I saw move.
Karen Elam, second.
Any discussion? Here none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to Action Item Two.
All right, Action Item Two is normally what you would see on the consent agenda, and actually, it was going to be on the consent agenda for the April meeting, but due to the number of questions that we were getting related to the issuance of the special nonrenewable license, we felt like that it was important that we include this on the agenda for today, and it does, when we walk through Standard Three, these individuals will also be impacted by the suspension that we're recommending under three. But on January the 10th, 2020, the Commission approved these revisions to modify the special nonrenewable license for strengthening the requirements for obtaining and maintaining this license type for any prospective license holder, and also to ensure alignment with the federal requirement. The public comment period was open from February 21, 2020 through March 17, 2020, and no public comments were received. So, what you have in your backup material, basically, pages two through six is the final version of the policy. Pages seven through 11 provides you the revisions that were approved by the Commission and then approved by the board to begin the APA process. But basically, what these revisions do is allow individuals to receive this special nonrenewable license for three years without having to meet the program entry requirements or testing requirements that we initially had in place that they must have met for three years without having to meet the program entry requirements or testing requirements that we initially had in place that they must have met by the end of year one. This, these licenses are still issued a year at a time, and this board item provides clarification of what the actual demonstration of sufficient progress looks like in order for a district to make the request for the second year. So, individuals may have this license for up to three years, it still must be requested by the district, and there's a requirement that the individual demonstrates sufficient progress, so this item just provides clarity around those statements.
Okay, any questions, discussion? Okay, then I'll read the motion and ask for a second, or someone to move in a second.
So, this item just provides clarity around those statements.
Okay, any questions, discussion? Okay, then I'll read the motion and ask for a second, or someone to move in a second, and then we'll entertain questions specific to the motion. So, the motion is approval to revise Mississippi Administrative Code 7-4, Part Four, Licenseure Guidelines K-12 to modify the licensure requirement for obtaining and maintaining the special nonrenewable license for prospective nontraditional teacher preparation program completers to ensure alignment to current federal guidelines for employing special education teachers who hold a temporary license as required by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act 612A14C as amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act.
Karen Elam, so moved.
Okay, there's a, none of those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. On to number three.
All right, Item Three is specifically related to rule suspensions that are outlined in Part Four, the licensure guidelines for K-12. So, we have categorized these suspensions into four categories, those that are related to traditional and nontraditional educator prep programs, entry test requirements, educator and administrator licensure test requirements, and educator and administrator licensure renewal requirements, and educator licensure reciprocity. So, before we start walking through each of these items briefly, I just want to make the board aware of the amount of conversation that we've had associated with some of the deadlines that are outlined. We've been very generous, which we have, with the deadlines associated with these suspensions, but I just wanted to provide you with the rationale upfront. We have had, as a result of these unprecedented and unique circumstances associated with COVID-19, such as the statewide school closures, along with the closures of testing companies and testing centers, you know, such as ETS, for example, this has eliminated access to the prospective test takers, and therefore, we do not believe it's economically feasible or practical to expect practicing our prospective educators and administrators to meet these guidelines that are outlined. And Dr. Murphy makes a very important point, and I think he has joined the call with us today, that, I mean, we all know that we don't guidelines that are outlined, and Dr. Murphy makes a very important point, and I think he has joined the call with us today, that, I mean, we all know that we don't know when we will return to normal, but when these testing centers, the national testing centers close, this is not just impacting the state of Mississippi, it's impacting every state. And so, we anticipate that it will take some time for the testing centers to be able to accommodate all states in ensuring that the tests are administered. So, when you see some of these timelines, that, I just wanted to provide you initially the rationale for that. So, we will start on the backup material, page three, with the Mississippi traditional and nontraditional educator prep, we've outlined the rule, but from and after September 30th, 2015, no teacher candidate shall be licensed to teach in Mississippi who do not meet the following criteria for entrance into the approved teacher education program, which is a 21 on the APT or equivalent, or no less than a 2.75 GPA on their pre-major coursework of the institution of teacher education prep program that the accepted cohort of candidates meets or exceeds a 3.0 GPA on pre-major coursework. So, the rule suspension that we're requesting is that we suspend the educator preparation program entry test criteria only for all candidates that are seeking admission to a Mississippi State Board of Education-approved traditional or nontraditional educator preparation program on or before, or before December 30th of 2021. And then it outlines the criteria that they must meet, but then on the bottom of page four, beginning January 1st, 2022, and thereafter, applicants seeking program admission shall meet all requirements that are in effect on the date that the complete application is received by the Mississippi State Board of Education-approved educator preparation program. So, again, this first category deals with both traditional and nontraditional educator preparation program entry test requirements. On page five, the second category is traditional and nontraditional educator and administrator licensure test requirements, and you can see traditional educator and administrator licensure test requirements, and you can see in the rules there, and I won't read all of that, but as you know, certain licensure test requirements must be met, and so in the suspension category, we're asking the board to suspend the licensure test criteria only for all complete applications received in educator licensure on or before December 31, 2020 for a five-year standard license sought by the way of completion of an approved traditional or nontraditional educator or administrator preparation program as defined by the State Board of Education.
Paula, excuse me, it's Karen Elam. You, in case somebody's not following what is in the written document, you said December 31, 2020 instead of 21.
Oh, I'm sorry, December 31st.
Sure, we're fair.
I can't even say 2019, 2020, and I'm sitting here reading from it. So, this second category would have the same deadline or end date extension as December 31, 2021, and then at the end on page seven, you'll see that beginning January 1st of 2022 and thereafter, applicants must meet all licensure requirements in effect on that So, that category dealt with the licensure test requirement. So, the third category deals with licensure renewal, and as you know, the State Board of Education is authorized to establish rules and regulations for the renewal and reinstatement of educator and administrator licensure. So, the MDE is asking approval, 2020, and grant those individuals a one-year extension for all license types with a current valid expiration date of June 30, 2020. So, if it's approved, then all individuals that qualify, their license will be dated to expire on June 30, 2021. So, we would be giving them an extra year of an extension. But beginning July 1, 2021, and thereafter, applicants for licensure renewal must meet all requirements in effect on that date. So, this is not an automatic renewal, individuals would still be expected to complete a licensure application, a renewal application for their license, so this is one that Dr. Murphy has provided to communications, and this has been, so this is one that Dr. Murphy has provided to communications, and this has been out, has been circulated among districts already about granting this one-year, one-year renewal, or the possibility of doing so. Any questions there? And then the last category is a five-year standard license for reciprocity, and so under this rule, we're asking that the board approve that we suspend the licensure test criteria only for all complete applications for a five-year standard reciprocity that's received in the division of educator licensure on or before December 31, 2021, and then beginning January 1, 2020, applicants for reciprocity must meet all requirements in effect at the date that the complete application is received in the office of educator licensure. Dr. Murphy, do you have anything that you would like to add to Item Three?
Uh, no, ma'am, thank you.
Um, Dr. Dean, if there's no questions related to Item Three, that concludes our presentation of the item.
Okay. Any thoughts or questions before I state the motion? Okay, the motion is approval to suspend specific policies in Mississippi Administrative Code 7-4, Part Four, Licenseure Guidelines K through 12 related to requirements for traditional, nontraditional educator preparation program entry test requirement, educator and administrator... non-traditional educator preparation program entry test requirement, educator and administrator licensure test requirement, educator and administrator licensure renewal in school districts during the spring of 2020 and in accordance with Mississippi Code Sections 3315-31, 3315-11B9, and 3315-11C1. That's the motion, so if somebody could state that with a second?
Dr. Dean, Buddy Bailey here, motion.
Karen Elam, second.
You have a motion and a second? Are there any questions on the motion? Are there questions? Okay, hear none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. On to number four.
All right, item number four is associated with the administrative process and performance review for educator preparation providers. And you only have one item in the backup on page three, Preparation Providers. And you only have one item in the backup on page three that only has one date, so maybe I won't stumble over the date outlined in this one. But this rule deals with the requirement of an individual completing a teacher educator preparation program, that they should successfully complete a minimum of 12 weeks or 60 working days for their student-teacher experience. And we're asking that the board grant approval for a one-year suspension of the requirement that students shall successfully complete the minimum of 12 weeks of a full-day student teaching for program completers for the spring of 2020. And then, to allow candidates' virtual experiences to be acceptable for a portion of the, and the Division of Educator Preparation will continue to work with the EPPs to determine what acceptable experiences that are necessary and that would demonstrate competency prior to the issuance of a license. I will say that Dr. Burson has worked very closely with the EPPs throughout this process. She has collected data related to the number of candidates that they have in the program and the number of weeks that is required for student teaching. And many of the institutions have a requirement beyond the 12 weeks. We also, with the data that she's received, have determined that individuals have been able to complete a number of the days that are required, communicated with EPPs following the governor's declaration of a state of emergency and that the instruction within the K-12 setting has not ended. And she has encouraged participation and has received feedback from the EPPs that many of the student teachers, or maybe even all of them, are still participating and engaging in whatever type of instructional practice is taking place in the local school district at the time. So, we don't feel that we'll have many that meet this minimum requirement at all.
Okay.
That will not meet, I'm sorry, that will not meet, but we still, still we need to get approval for this item in the event there are educators that may not meet the minimum 12 weeks.
Yep.
Still, we need to get approval for this item in the event there are educators that may not meet the minimum 12 weeks.
Yep, I've actually had a couple of questions about that and thanks to the staff for being responsive, so I've handled a few of these myself. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll read the motion. Approval by the State Board of Education to suspend specific policies outlined in Mississippi Administrative Code 7-107 administrative process and performance review for spring 2020 prospective program completers following Governor Tate Reeves' proclamation of a state of emergency as a result of the impact of COVID-19 coronavirus on school districts during spring 2020 in accordance with Mississippi Section 3315-31, 3315-11B9, and 3315-11C1. That's the motion. Discussions or question regarding the motion? Okay, hear none? Do, have a motion to, all those in favor signify by saying aye, sorry.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, I'm told by Erin Meyer, our attorney, that we need to do some administrative house cleaning here. We need to cover, there's a few related State Board policy measures that were not in the original motions that are in our backup material and as the next step to this, there's a proclamation that goes to the Secretary of State. So, this is more for administrative cleanup to ensure that we're, you know, aligned with all the proper requirements. So, that there's a, she's requested that I ask for a motion to suspend 7-3, which are tied to these suspensions already voted on today related to Mississippi Administrative Code 7-4, 7-24, 7-163, and 7-107. So, again, my understanding is this is just to make sure we're, we have all bases covered in our, in our actions as a State Board and what has already been approved in the motions. There's any questions about that? If not, then if someone can move for the motion that I stated with a second, then we'll vote.
Karen Elam, motion, excuse me, I so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Rosemary Altman, a second.
Okay, any additional questions or comments on this procedure? Hear none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any, can I get that again? It sounded like I only heard three. Can I get a, any, can I get that again? It sounded like I only heard three. Can I get a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to adjourn here in a minute, but before we do, just open it up for any additional discussion, business thoughts? Any questions or comments from the board?
Dr. Dean, this is Rosemary Altman. I just want to end the meeting with the comment, following up on Dr. Wright's comment. I have been so impressed with teachers out there who have, I mean, they have done Herculean work in this last week and just seeing what my own grandchildren are doing and my friends' children and grandchildren, it is, I mean, it is so impressive and it's so inspiring and humbling to think what all they've done and all the things that communities are doing to try to keep, you know, it just gives you such faith and such hope in the school district. And we have such momentum going that certainly we don't want to lose it. And I think everybody understands that and are just going above and beyond to make sure that we continue that.
Cannot agree more, the stories that are out there and how quickly our very capable teachers were able to transition to the online or other instructional methods to meet the emergency declarations really, really been tremendous. I think those stories will be told for a long time. Other thoughts or comments? So, I'll just say, you know, again, we've said it twice now, this is the third time. We understand this is unprecedented territory. For those listening, if there are things, considerations around administrative statute, rules, regulations, orders, et cetera, statute, rules, regulations, orders, et cetera, that need to be considered, there's a process for that. I would encourage you to reach out to either a State Board member or the Mississippi Department of Education Executive Leadership Team and make it known and we'll ensure it gets a proper consideration. We reserve the right to call future meetings. There's none on the books until our regularly scheduled April meeting as of now, but we are diligently paying attention. And again, all the faith and credit goes to our executive leadership team in the department. So, if there's not other comments, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Motion, was there a second?
Karen Elam, second.
Okay, any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned at 11:30.